We'll start with a roll call.
Patrick Gordon, Principal Centipede Central Elementary School.
Amanda Kewalk, Director of Student Services.
Sean Whinney, Principal Central Middle High School.
Megan Reed, Assistant Principal Centipede Middle High School.
Claire Tilly, Student Representative of Centipede.
Nancy, your school board?
Elise Lozat, School Board.
Harry Claus, School Board.
Annie Nichols, School Board.
Ed Anderson, School Board.
Wes Scholwes, Superintendent.
Kelly Russell, Possessive Security.
We can stand for the part.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to just point out, welcome Claire. It's nice to have a representative here.
Hi.
So for the record, Claire is substituting for Taylor. Taylor Goodspeed will be our student rep, but Taylor is at volleyball game. And Claire Goodspeed did a presentation on social media and she's running off the call.
Awesome.
Well, thank you for having me.
Uh, we're looking for the approval of school board meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the August twenty first. School board meeting.
I'll second it.
Any corrections, concerns, changes? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Looking for a motion on the policy meeting.
How much do you approve the policy minutes?
I'll second it.
Any concerns, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda review. So we've introduced Taylor and Claire, so we're good there. If we can move the last action item, extended field trip, it should be under information because of the, um... Sorry about the reviews, what is it? You know that trip they do in eighth grade?
Nature's Classroom?
Thank you. Nature's Classroom.
The hard part of the grade for all of us is going to be, it's now outdoor class.
Outdoor classroom.
It's going to take a long time for that to...
That's why I didn't know it. I was thinking outdoor classroom, right?
It doesn't slow.
It does, it's been forty-five minutes, it's going to happen.
Same program, you mean?
Yes.
Same program.
Same program for the name.
Big difference a little bit between the old way and the new way.
It's the company name.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
But take stuff to your answer.
Do all those now or sort of?
Uh, no, we can review that.
Uh, public forum in accordance with policy B E D H. I do not see anybody here from the public, so we'll move on from that. School board, uh, school updates, I should say, S C E S.
So beginning of year is off to both a smooth and successful start. Our beginning of year assessments are complete and teachers are diving deep into the data to make informed instructional decisions. For instance, about fifteen, twenty percent of our student population will be receiving some form of reading and/or math intervention. These interventions are designed to support student needs and strengthen academic areas before possibly considering a special education evaluation if necessary. A huge shout out to Louise Nichols and Jess White for leading the front there. It's a lot of time, energy, and effort in those, uh, to sort through the data and support teams in making those decisions, so it's really appreciated. This year, the transportation department visited early to teach bus expectations to our students and conduct emergency drills. Our dedicated bus drivers have been going above and beyond in the beginning of school year. We can't say enough great things there. So at S C E S, we started what we're calling our SOAR initiative. It's we stay safe, own our actions, act responsibly, and respect everyone. Students were taught those, uh, school-wide expectations and they learned how they can be unique in the different environments around school. And while most students grasp those expectations right away, there are some students who do need reminders, instruction, or support. So we've categorized three different distinct areas where we support students. There's the reteach area where it might be an unexpected behavior, but it's one that we can quickly, uh, reteach or provide the expectation and move on. So the classroom teachers, the teacher takes care of that. Minors are a little bit larger or their frequency might be like over the course of the day, the student did this X for Y behavior a couple times. And that gets documented, so we can track behavior over the course of a period of time and we can look for trends in being able to support students if they have a deficient skill area. And then there's the major behaviors, the ones that tend to come to me. The ones that are disruptive to the learning environment or might be very physical in that nature. We have various supports and consequences that we go through to try to support students so they both learn and have something happen that they, you know, no longer want to have happen again. In September, for example, we recorded twenty-seven minor behaviors and thirty-seven major behaviors. No surprise there that majority of those major and minor behaviors are both on the, are on the playground. Just an unstructured area. So our committee is already working to plan targeted strategies to support students that need to be able to learn. And also, what are we going to do when they don't learn a little bit more? So amping up as we go. We found a wonderful candidate to be our winter activity coordinator and we're really excited about that, so it'll take a little bit of, uh, responsibility off of everyone's shoulders. And we're meeting tomorrow to have an organizational meeting and get going for the year. This week's the Classic Book Fair. Of course, that brings a lot of joy to our kids. They like, they like the trinkets more than the books sometimes, but hey. So tonight was the family buying event and Heidi Doyle goes above and beyond to make sure that that happens annually. And, um, it brings in a ton of revenue for our library program. So we can put purchase books, materials, some of our robotics has been purchased through this Classic Book Fair. They provide a lot of different avenues. And so that's what's gone out of the elementary school.
I just want to comment, I really appreciated the highlights you've done in the Laker ledger for the support staff. Not even support staff, but the social emotional staff, the canna grant, and the psychologists and stuff like that. I think it's important for families to know that those people are there in what they do, so thank you.
Moving on to S N H S.
Uh, do you mind if I have the student rep go first?
Nope.
As you know, we are almost two months into the school year so far and at this point I'd like to say it's set and everything is in motion. Um, I think the biggest concern of the students so far has been the construction in the back of the school. One of the concerns that the students have is parking spots. The parking spots are oddly valued by the students and there have been some occasions in which spots have been taken by the workers. Additionally, some students are inconvenienced by the closed back hallway and some teachers are inconvenienced by some of the noises coming from the construction. We know it's for the better for the school, but I think we're definitely looking forward to it to come to completion. On another note, progress reports just came out, so we are halfway through the quarter. And feedback from teachers have been positive noting that students have been more diligent with schoolwork than previous years. Lastly, we recently held our class vote for student, for class officers and student council representat- rep. Sorry. Um, classes have started their progress on fundraising and students have started strong off with... I'm so sorry. Um, student council has started strong off and they already scheduled the theme week, the student bonfire, the twenty twenty-four pep rally, and the homecoming dance, which are all taking place the week of the twenty-first, hopefully. Um, a few of our themes are Green Day, Tropical Vacation, Neon Day, Patriotic Day, and Class Colors. Um, I think if it's opportunity to inform you of the S M H S on students' behalf, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you may possibly have. Sorry for the...
Nothing different, nothing new.
Good job.
Russ, what is the timing of the construction left there? Can we get a close by soon or hold?
So good news, we have heat.
Yeah.
The good news is, uh, a pile of mass boilers got taken off the boat, off the ship before the longshoremen went on, on strike and they're sitting in a parking lot. And so they hope by the end of the month, they'll have that up and running and then it's just going to be fine tuning. But, uh, as far as parking, that should get better and better for you because equipment should stop being pulled out and should start to be removed over the next month.
He's working real well in my office.
Yes. Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Mr. Holden decided I could do the sauna.
It's hot in the locker room too.
Locker room as well, so. As Claire said, uh, you know, we're, we're, we're up and running. The, uh, the building has been, I would call it, uh, it's what it is, you know, it's, it's a little bit of minor inconvenience, but we, we understand it as well. Certainly, students are anxious to get the back hallway open, uh, things along those lines. But, uh, they've been really good about it, you know, uh, you know. There really hasn't been much complaining about it, I think, again, it's, it's an inconvenience, but they recognize that it will have an end. And we don't have a ton of control over the end, so they've been really good. Uh, busy guidance month, you know, we've already had a mini college fair that was here that had, you know, four-year schools and community colleges and a lot of local colleges. And then we also had an opportunity to take students, uh, to a college fair at S N H U. We had twenty students go to New Hampshire Career Day with Mr. Carlton and then we have, you know, parent student college night tonight. So, so September, early October is a very heavy guidance focus as, as you've got the seniors who are, who are starting that process. So, uh, they're well into it. Speaking of seniors, we had Jordan Roosevelt, uh, is a national merit semifinalist, so that's like one for some of the countries. So, uh, really, really fed on the cap for Jordan, so it's a phenomenal job for Jordan. As Claire said, the, the, the classes are up and, and running and they're, they're doing a good job of, we've got the, the dance coming and the, and the bonfire. Hopefully, hopefully, everything gets, gets done there. And so mostly positive, we've seen a little bit of an uptick on some discipline at the middle high schools this year, early on. So we're hoping that, uh, that slows down, um, but we have had a little more than we typically have this year. If you ask me why, I'd, I'd probably say, uh, the same things. I think if I keep kids off social media, we'd probably cut up, cut out half of our discipline issues. But I can't do that, so we do have that. But, uh, you know, comparatively, you know, we still have really good kids, we have really polite kids, you know. We've had some discipline issues, but I don't think I've had to take, talk back to me this or anything like that, so, uh, really good things overall.
What's the national merit college?
So national merit is a, is a national, um, recognition for the, you know, when we're talking the top, it's, it's the, the truly the top students in the country. It's, it's based on their PSATs, you know, so, so scoring, um, but really high on the PSAT. So it's a, it's a very small percentage. I've learned a lot over, over the years in the sense of your score in New Hampshire would have to be higher than, say, your score in West Virginia. So it's a certain percentage of students in your state for taking the PSATs. So it's, it's pretty exclusive. Then you can move on to the next category. Most national merit semifinalists end up being finalists. It's a pretty large percentage. And then there's a step above that which becomes even more difficult. So it certainly, um, it, it's a great individual accomplishment. You know, it certainly helps things like, you know, from the college process or possibly getting scholarships, things along those lines. But, uh, we don't have them very often. We've had a couple of students recently who were like recommended or committed students. We've had a lot more of those recently, which is also very good, but, uh, it's a, it's a very good accomplishment for Jordan. He's very excited and he should have been excited.
Need a little bit of new staff and some shifting around, how is all that?
Yes, good question. Overall, I think it's gone well so far, you know, so we certainly have the new math teacher, which was sort of unexpected last year, came at the end of the year. Um, you know, we, we foresaw the English changes, but I think that, um, you know, so far, there are teachers that our students are familiar with, you know. So I think that makes things, that transition go a lot more smoothly. Front office, we've had some changes as well, yeah. So that's, that's always interesting just because everything's new. So I think a lot of times is, is, schools are complex places, sometimes people don't think there's complex, but it's just, there's lots of things going on, um, at different times. But, uh, what's nice here is lots of people are willing, are willing to chip in, you know, to do things and, and, uh, our students are very, um, understanding as well. But it's kind of cute when the students come in because they just, they're so used to everybody at home now, so it's interesting because they're like, well, you know me, right? And it's like, you know, for somebody who's two weeks, it's like, no. But, you know, here we have so little turnover, which is nice that our students really are used to, everybody really does know.
Superintendent, update?
Thank you. So from a district perspective, Amanda, on that question, and it's a great question, thank you for asking it. You know, we're really pleased with the professionals that we brought on this, this year. We've been able to, I mean, I give a lot of credit to Amanda, go out and recruit some good people and find some good people and steal some good people. Our two new adjustment counselors, they're doing a great job. Matt found a custodian and so we're fully staffed there. Food service, we had a couple more applicants come in the door last week and so we feel comfortable there. Sean mentioned the front office. And then people that were here last year, we had some people that came in last year coming into their second year and really feeling a lot more comfortable after made it to those divisions. And, and that really was a credit to the start of the school year. I think you're a, Paul Patrick and John say it's been a great start to the year in Manhattan. I think people are feeling comfortable in their positions and well supported, which is really important because turnover is expensive. Couple other things, uh, as, as I like to keep to date, uh, the season of legislation has started. There's already been a hundred LSAs that have been already posted. And yes, we do have an, an election in November and depending on that election, some of those may drop, some of those may get picked up. House that alone has a meeting this week that they're going to look at over twenty-five bills that, that sort of put on hold or put out, out to pasture to see what they want to do with those. It's also veto week, I believe, next week, where the House of Senate can come back and challenge any bills that be governor veto. And there are certainly some things that potentially they may be able to override with, with a vote there. Personally, we've been involved in negotiations with Ed and Kerry. Policy, we just got the policy update, we have policies ready to go. Amanda and Elise, Elise and I will be meeting, uh, to, to undergo our next policy meeting. We have our A B C members in place. Linda Scott is coming and Jen, so two returning and Scott being the new member there. Uh, we start that process in November. Our budget, our departments have already given their sort of first run of their budget to Kelly and we're putting that together. We, Ed and I had a meeting with the town in our A B C process. We have, uh, three meetings that are scheduled throughout the budget process. We had our first meeting last week, did this to talk about potential things that may be coming up, so each, each side understands what some of the bigger asks might be. That worked really well. We have our audit coming up in two weeks, Jen? Two weeks. Met with Chief Cobb, I'm going to be working with him, looking at our emergency operation plans, specifically revisiting, uh, off-site evacuation. Kind of meeting with according to school board and superintendent and, uh, we'll be talking about that later on tonight. And, uh, one of the, really working with Rob and our adjustment counselors and looking at how to ensure that kids are coming into our school and able to access classes. And one of the big things that we're finding across our state and we see it here as well, um, maybe a little more in the elementary school than here. But because kids go out to recess, a lot of kids that have the ability to get pre-reduced breakfast or just breakfast in general will bypass it to go outside, uh, to go to recess. Makes sense, I get it. And I think some of the kids in the middle high school, although they should have a little more common sense to go, I'm hungry, I should eat. Uh, maybe bypass that to come in here and play, um, dodgeball or to be with their friends, whatever it may be. So we're looking at different ways to potentially make sure that breakfast is available in locations for kids if they can access that. And then also looking for, uh, ways to potentially have food available for kids here. We're probably a year away on that and I'll talk to you more about that when it gets a little closer. An email, one of our two, uh, students in grades five through twelve, um, asking her if they would like to be part of our strategic plan. And so probably one of my goals is looking at our strategic plan and I would like to truly ground that strategic plan with student voice. And so we're going to run through that SWOT analysis process with students first. So I'm going to have the principals help me and ask kids to send an email back, tell me why they think they would be a good person on the committee. Or the principals will pick a committee, uh, and I'll run them through that SWOT process in November. So we're excited to get that work off the ground. And Sean mentioned social media. If I can make a plug, I can, I can plug here. Uh, our adjustment counselors have done some really great things this year. They have a four-part series starting in October. Screen Age, Screen Age was a document that they came out about kids' use of technology and they've built upon it. And so our first, first part, part one of the four is October eighth at the elementary school. I have pushed things out, Sean and, I think Hannah has put things out with Cassie. It's in the library, it's in the band, uh, it's on our website, it's being pushed on our Facebook. The first session is about technology in our schools. The second session is our online world. The third session is living healthy, uh, living healthy lives in technology. And the fourth is growing up in a digital age. And this is for parents. This is really geared towards parents to help them get a better understanding of what potentially their children are doing online. Uh, on their phones, in their rooms, on their, you know, personal devices, not on our school devices because we have those pretty tight. And so I think if, if we can do anything in this society that's really being proactive and trying to get information to parents that they can hopefully utilize in, in raising and overseeing their children on some of the technology. Social media certainly is, uh, an interesting, an interesting world. Certainly, there can be a lot of good, good from it, but unfortunately, there's a lot of bad that can come out of it too. And hopefully through training with parents, training through programs like this, training from us in school, uh, we can help kids understand that digital world and how to live in it safely and appropriately. So I, I highly recommend attending those series at the, uh, at the elementary school. And I think that's it for now, thank you. Sorry, that was really long, I didn't... Sounds like a lot of last one for the... Any other questions?
Russ, how are you, um, how is that being promoted to the families to try and get participation?
So I pushed it yesterday to all families in, in all K through twelve. We're putting it on our Facebook page this weekend and then I, what I, Amanda did is she made a flyer for each, uh, month, each, each session. And I'll continue to push those, we'll put them on our website. Again, we put them in the library in town, we put them at the band, I told her to put them up around town. Just, just as much as possible to get it out there. I think after we probably put it in as a weekly, um, if he already hasn't, do his weekly newsletter as well.
We're going to send, we're going to email it to all our middle school parents because this is the elementary school. So again, that, that conversation with a third grade parent is certainly definitely a love parade. But that conversation between a fifth grade parent and a seventh grade parent can be pretty similar. So we're going to, you know, like, um, we talked to Hannah and we're going to email it to all, to our middle school parents.
School board topics, presentations of interest to the board, S P T O boosters.
So you were meant to S P O boosters, Jen Korea is now the head of the boosters and I believe, at least we still S P T O. So, um, and she'd be more willing to come in and speak to you in October if you would like to hear from Jen and I'm assuming maybe it is... But you were going to think about maybe some other things that you would like to, to hear throughout the year. If those are the topics you'd like me to, uh, get specifically or we can just do what we've always done, I'll ask the principals, bring somebody and then I'll pull either transportation or facilities or technology, something somewhere a little bit harder to bring in. But if there's something you really haven't heard or liked or, I'll be known or maybe the... Go ahead.
I, I can share one of the things, you know, we're always worried about that transition. So, uh, one of the good news in, in talking, um, ironically to you, right? We've been doing it now, Jen Korea, we, we had some pretty involved sixth grade parents in a good way. So I think that that, that transition is, is, is going to be in good shape. So we're looking forward to that. But, um, this is always the case, sometimes you have those five or six people who are doing it and they're like, Ed, we've been doing it for nine years or ten years and we're now at the end of the run. I don't see anybody else here. And it seems like those numbers, you know, from the middle high school are, are looking pretty good with a couple of classes that are coming out. So there'll be more detail, but I, I, I have a level of confidence, which is good.
I think hearing from the adjustment counselors would be helpful to kind of hear what's going on in the district between elementary school and middle high school, what families might be dealing with.
Yep, absolutely, we had, I had already talked to them both. What we'd probably do is wake up at the first of the year.
Yeah.
So they have a little more sense of understanding a little bit. But absolutely.
Maybe because it's one of your goals is the, um, the co-curricular review? So maybe in the spring or whenever that kind of plays out?
Yep.
If that brings any changes or anything different or what the students are interested in?
We'll put that on that.
That's interesting.
How is that evaluated? Like is that evaluated every year or what's the process for that?
No, we don't necessarily evaluate them, I mean, so sports are a little easier. Other, other programs, you know, if we don't have the kids to run in the back program, we don't invest. But we do, we do through our contract negotiations, we kind of look at those and we ask the teachers to look at those. But as Sean just said, the turnover, right, that transition period. And so we've had somebody doing chess club for a long time in the elementary school and I don't think that person's going to give that up. But I think that person was also a rough the outside is giving that up. And we have to look at, is that really a viable program that we should be running anymore? Should we replace that? I think I use the analogy, should be Dungeons and Dragons or doing something on coding online. So, well, I think we try to observe and try to gear things towards what kids' interests are. And I know I asked that back at the beginning of the year, to think about what those things are that you have that are interesting to you, that may be also of interest of, of kids. I use the example of Tom Coverdale taking kids out in the woods in February, that was great, wonderful. I don't expect anybody else necessarily to take kids in the woods in February, right? Unless you have a really passion for that. But if there's something else that somebody could do for kids in February other than taking kids and stepping forward and looking for those. We don't have a process to value, I'm, what I'm doing is I'm evaluating sort of, you know, are they, are they taking too much time? Are there things that we should be doing? Are you feeling like you're getting other benefits? Do you feel like they benefit your academic? They feel like they benefit you socially? Sort of giving just a perspective of all sort of how those things are working for kids.
Yeah, I didn't know if you looked at like participation rates year over year to see if there's like sort of trends on things that are not as popular as maybe they once were and you kind of...
Yeah, I think through athletics, I mean, typically we're in that seventy-nine, eighty-two range. And I know that's a statistic that, you know, high school uses on its profile. But I think a lot of that, again, is, you know, we look at our sport teams. You know, we tried new things, so this year we're doing Makerspace, I think for the second year, maybe, or is it the second year? See how that goes. They, we have like a robotics club, robotics became Makerspace and we tried to switch things up, like B-Club was here for a while.
Yeah, B-Club, yeah.
We've got Mike Club. I think B-Club makes ball, might not does Tom as much as Jim steps in. But, you know, on my ten year, we've had things come and go and we really try to gear against students.
As like guidance mentioned in our S S T team, like our student support team, we make a list of all the students and then identify if they have at least something to quickly if they can actually. And then if they don't, we're looking at reaching out, what would work, what would be to done for you. And that's how some things have come about. So we're looking at targeting like kids who aren't doing something you kind of, and like, I work every day, well, I'm happy with my job, I'm doing it.
So to help encourage them to try to have...
Who is in and how do you get them more and all, except that our participation rate is really high.
Yeah, no, I knew it was high, I just didn't know, like, for some of the programs that, like, are still there, are they as high as they were or do they start to dwindle? And is it more based on like who's willing to lead what as opposed to what people want to get? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think, I think it's a little bit of both.
What's that?
It's a fun game to take both ways, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Like when I have kids and someone will be like, like for a while there was a stock market club because they wanted to do it, it's five kids who wanted to meet and...
That's fun.
They made it happen and then other times it's the teacher has an interest and says, anyone want to do this? And they did. So it's kind of working if it goes both ways.
Like DI, I mean, for a while we, we won a national competition in DI and I don't think we've had a DI in two years.
And Mark, Mark Crowe's line, which is an interesting one, is, is, you know, we had some attorneys who would do it and we had some kids who would enjoy doing it. Well, then the attorneys, it was difficult and the answer can be, well, why would, well, why don't you go get some more attorneys? Number one, it's not that easy. And number two, it wasn't like you had twenty-five people going, right? So, so based on when you're kind of recr- you, you know, at the end you're having to recruit five or six kids to do it, you know, because you had five kids who wanted to do it. You really wanted, you, you really kind of needed ten and so you recruit five and so all of a sudden it's like, do we really, you know? Is it really worthwhile, I guess would be the way. And if you had five kids who really were motivated by it, they'd go recruit the other five kids and then you might be able to find the attorney. But where we feel good is that the huge majority of kids are still involved in some kind of activity. And it is, I look at it every year, you know, and we sit down and it's, it's always in that eighty percent range. A little higher, some years a little lower, but it's never, it's never fifty, it's never fifty-five.
And to your point, Megan, what do kids do like out of school? You know, they're equestrians or they dance or they do gymnastics or like things that we don't necessarily have, which I wonder, you know, can we use? I see the library and the rec department doing all these awesome things. Can we use them as a little bit of a partnership of, hey, Dungeons and Dragons, I feel like they did that, you know?
We certainly can and we have.
That's great, yeah. I think that makes a big difference.
We're looking at a Lego program, I mean, the library's not a Lego program, yeah. Definitely rec whenever we can. We're gonna have a Lego program, and we know the library's not a Lego program, yeah, definitely we'll rec whenever we can, you know, coexist with some of their programs. And a lot of our, a lot of those programs are much geared a little bit to the lower end, you know, K-five, if you will, which is great, but we certainly can collaborate with them, and this is not.
That's cool.
And in terms of the elementary school, we certainly try to work with the rec department, we get their information out there. But they're at the whim of volun- parent volunteers and community volunteers, which when we're releasing kids at two forty, there's not many of them. So we are actively looking, considering how to grow our programming at the elementary level as well, um, because a lot of it in the last few, four or five years has dissipated, so we're, we're considering that.
And I'm sorry I don't know this, how is your after-school program going?
Um, very well.
Great.
Um, they have fifteen to seventeen who are signed up.
Great.
And attend various days. I've been very happy with, uh, the relationship we've had, um, and, uh, we're always trying to find ways to help families get in there, so we've set up families with resources, using our school adjustment counselors to make that happen. So I imagine at some point it will be larger, but, you know, it is certainly cost prohibitive to some families.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is there, is there financial support for some of the families where it is cost prohibitive?
They can use child care scholarships, if they, if they have the income requirement, but I think outside of that, I don't know if the school provides.
Yeah. For a classification purpose, so the after-school program is run by the
The outing club, right?
The outing club through the New London. It's not, I also guess there is a funding system as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, that number doesn't sound really high, which makes me think that maybe there's a cost element that would prohibit people, because like, two forty is not end of work for most people, right?
It, it, it's expensive for some, and that was what we did hear from, uh, last year in September and October, and if families found care. Um, I would, just because I was very curious when I heard from a lot of families, I did do my own research and went around the areas, and I found we were actually at the median or below in the area in terms of what they were offering, in terms of pricing. There were considerable number who were more expensive than what we worked for them on, or not we, what they are.
Yeah, it's one point for cost, it's just, you know, that's the issue with all child care right now, is the cost for many families, and especially families who are just above that income bracket, that they don't qualify for subsidy. So, it's not anything the outing club did or anyone has done, it's just a barrier in general, so.
Yeah, it was structured really differently where, where my kids grew up.
Yeah.
Right, it was like, it was part of the school, and it was really low cost. Like, they had before school and after school, you could opt for either one, part-time, whatever, but it was done through the school, so it was not so cost prohibitive. But I, I mean, I have no idea what it takes to, you know, implement and run something like that, but it was, it was programmed through the school as opposed to externally sourced.
We looked at that a few years ago, probably six or seven years ago now, because in a bigger school district, there's actually a regular opportunity there as well. Not that it's a little poor, but if there's a, if there's an opportunity to bring, you know, help alleviate some of that stress beginning to the end of the day, but it's also giving kids opportunity to announce an enrichment opportunity, uh, and things that they couldn't be involved in. And typically in a bigger school district, the school would run it and then bring in the lawyer for, um, you know, the, the, the lawyer program, an astronomer, a stenologist, the chess player, and they'd bring those people in, and then that service is provided through the school out of either pay to that provider. So it might be five dollars to get in the Lego program. So maybe free to come to the program, but if you want this program, it may be five dollars, if not, we're gonna work here and just do our traditional things over here, or maybe we'll play over here. So, we worked in here, and just, we had to hire them, right, and we had to really staff it, and this is not enough kids to potentially even cover the costs of the staffing, never mind thinking about any revenue or anything else. It just became a little cost prohibitive from the beginning.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, I know that, again, like, they were staffed that only did before school, only did after school.
I, I only found one district locally who is running their own program within them, everyone else is a third-party vendor.
Or they don't have it at all.
Or they don't have it at all, which is, which actually was the more popular option available to the districts around us.
And outing clubs only doing after school, right, not?
For cost, only after school, yes.
Moving on to policy update, second reading.
I, yeah, sure.
I will be your last, I'm sorry.
So as we talked in August, these are, this is the second reading, but, um, Amanda Hewlett did some updates to the procedural safeguards to be more in compliance with state and federal standings. The ACF Food and Nutrition Services just added the FDA's anti-discrimination civil rights language. Um, and then we just simplified, link, and combined some of the school year and school year calendar policy, and simplified the language in early graduation, along with program for people with disabilities, so. There was more detail in August, but I'm more happy to go over it again if we'd like, so.
And, and so for full transparency, if you look at your policy IC school year, school year calendar, uh, we call it obviously the end of, has a section in yellow.
Yes.
Uh, so that legislation was passed, that policy update came up yesterday. So my policy passed, and the policy today, and then turning around and passing it again, so I added that paragraph. Basically what it says, the legislation now says we have to call our policies and calendars by their appropriations. And I won't say anymore, I'll just leave you alone, and we got it out on the page, so.
We're looking for an approval for these numbers.
You are now looking for a motion and a second approval, and they will become your files.
Looking for a motion and approval of second reading of the policy.
I motion to approve. I'll second.
Concerns, comments?
What, what changed on the, um, on the non-discrimination?
So, that's the, um...
Like, from first to second reading, I thought you said there was a change?
No, that one didn't have a change, the, the school year calendar.
Oh, okay.
Had a change with the...
Okay, okay, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Action items, looking for the approval, or approved, proposed twenty-four, twenty-five budget calendar.
Make a motion to approve the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five budget calendar.
I'll second.
Concerns or comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Looking for a motion to approve the proposed extracurricular positions.
I'll make a motion to approve proposed extracurricular positions.
I'll second.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Um, I just, are, so we, are we doing a fall and spring play and musical this year? Am I reading this wrong? Oh, no, this, don't we usually do like one, like one?
We're looking at, sorry.
I thought it was like one thing was in the spring, one was in the fall.
Yeah, so the fall is, historically, the fall is a play, and the spring is the, is a play, but it's a musical.
Oh, gotcha.
Historically. Ideally.
Yeah, but there's gonna be two this year?
That's the plan.
There has been in the past.
Last year, remember last year we didn't do the fall one because we had numbers issues in the fall.
Yes, it was a student decision. Yep.
You're still looking for the advisor, the fall play advisor?
Um, they don't always need it.
Okay.
A stage advisor.
Yeah, a stage advisor, gotcha.
What is the voice coach? I've not heard that one before. It's for the musical.
The musical.
It's for the play.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay. Thought that was a new. Co-curricular or something, I don't know what it's.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We go approved. We motion to approve the extended trip of that, and information, we're gonna put that on information.
Extended trip?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Uh, looking for a motion for the outdoor classroom.
Just, I'll just give you that, if we put that information out, you can...
Do that today, okay. So, moving on to information items, October first, twenty twenty-four enrollments.
In your packet, um, there are the enrollment numbers for the council year, and that is on October first. Uh, and I left the twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four numbers there, so that you can see that. And, uh, we have a few more kids than we did last year, so we're happy about that.
Seems like this number's higher than it's been in a while.
Yeah.
Uh, yep, yep, for sure.
How's that compare, do you know how that compares to the NASDAQ?
Pretty close, Andy.
Okay.
We've been pretty consistent with that number and hanging of that.
I like to, like to hear that.
Yep, and we are actually, just, I just sent out the paperwork today, um, we, we'll conduct another enrollment study, we'll get that information, it's going to come to December, January.
Yeah.
As you know, that's...
Okay.
This actually, I think, from our last projection is higher than the last NASDAQ projection.
I think so, yes.
If we go back to twenty, probably twenty, 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 twenty-one.
Yeah.
It's about right over.
Okay.
Nice. Trust me enough, I feel like when I first started on the board, I think it's eight years ago now, alls I heard was there's down, 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 and it's been opposite of what I've heard every year.
Do you know how many new students, like, um, not tuition students, but new to SUNB students we got this year?
I don't have that, I don't like that.
It's, it really is a small number, I mean, I think we still, one of the obstacles we run into is just the housing market, right? Still limited housing market, so we don't have, we have a couple, we have a couple of new students to SUNB, but, you know, really when you look at, and we did look at these numbers, you know, it's a big sixth grade, you know, so I'm not looking at the district number as much, I'm looking at the SUNB middle high school number, and we have a big sixth grade. Um, and we had a, like, when you look at that ninth grade class, that ninth grade class was tiny, like, it was, it was very small. And we had a second year in a row of a pretty high number of tuition students coming to the class. So I don't, I don't think it's gonna happen every year, in fact, I know it's not gonna happen every year, because we have discussions with, you know, we have another high unity year, um, but in a, in a couple of years, I just know they don't have the numbers, right, so we're not gonna get six unity kids two years from now. But most of the numbers have been from the increase in tuition, and just the fact that the sixth grade class is a pretty, is a pretty healthy size of class.
And at the elementary school, we were five to seven new families in town, and that's before considering the fact that since I've been here two years ago, tuition at the elementary level, I think went from thirteen or fourteen my first year, I think we're at twenty-two this year. So, um, we've, we've had some bigger classes that this, the transition over to the middle high school where they got our numbers, that that's bolstered and made, uh, SES look like we've stayed pretty good within a couple.
Yeah. I mean, just the overall difference, it was good.
So, Andy, because you asked a question, the enrollment projection from NASDAQ, uh, for this year was four oh three. Last year was three ninety-seven, this year was projected at four oh three last year, and we'd exceeded that.
Yep.
All right, uh, the SMHS biomass update, which we've already got some from Russ, anything to add?
I got nothing to add.
We're happy with where we are, sorry it's an inconvenience, but at the end of the day, we'll all be a little better off.
Seems like it's a lot faster than the first one.
Yes.
You know, having the guts, the, the stuff in the building done, yeah, it's made a huge difference, huge difference. And kids, again, compliment EDI and the people that they have, they are very respectful, very polite, you know, making sure, checking in, working hand in hand with us, even on parking, even on deliveries and all those kind of things, so, uh, can't say enough about them as being a partner, having worked with them for the last three, four years now, maybe five.
Great. I do have to say, which is a little bit on this, with that construction going on, it was really nice to see those benches and stuff out on the field, um, so you can sit down and eat some of the food that you're buying, there are games and stuff, I don't know if anybody's noticed that, but
We've seen it.
It's a nice little like patio area there, and it really, I just kind of watched what people were kind of congregating, they're sitting down and having a meal, and it was really nice to see.
So when they were putting in the propane tanks, they dug in front of the concession stands, it goes in, and they kind of left it, and they seeded it, and in the late summer, we had all that heavy rain, and that seed just went to the swamp.
Right.
And so we were talking, and we said, you know, they started putting stone in other places, we were digging up over here, and so let's take the lumon here, put it back here for Sharon's garden, and then let's restone the thing, and we did put the stone down, they were gonna put some, some architect on, landscape beams in, but that, before last Friday's game, the custodian, John, said, John White said, hey, let's do some picnic games and put them out, and we went, and we did, we did some picnic games, and it, it really worked, I heard really well.
It was very, very...
And the, the concession stand actually did like a really big number that night, too.
It was very high. It's just a nice addition, because I travel to a lot of, uh, away games, and there's nothing that you see like that there, and it's, uh, I think it's good for everybody. Manifest, looking for a motion to approve...
So I'm just gonna say, everything going on that, that project, adventure, outing club, outdoor bounds, nature's classroom field trip that we do every year with eighth grade, it's in your packet, it's a great trip, it is now, as Megan indicated, a different name, it is now outdoor classroom, uh, formerly nature's classroom, we thank Sharon and Corinne for doing it, putting it together, and continue to work on it as well.
Thank you. Motion to approve the manifest as stated.
I'll make a motion to approve the manifest as stated.
I'll second.
Questions, comments, concerns, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda items for next meeting?
Budget reminders?
Budget reminders.
So just, uh, as a quick reminder, you all will have a four thirty, uh, prior to this meeting, where Kelly and I and Amanda will review the overall budget review, we'll make sure you have some food available. We'll run from that meeting to this meeting, um, but budget will be a big piece of conversation, uh, and we'll continue to update you on progress from our first, uh, Screen Age review, we can certainly give you some updates there, um, and other things that will be going on with the ministry. So we'll have, probably have policies that this will amend up, and then we'll look them in, what do you say, we'll go around the policies.
Those are the fun ones, the next one.
Uh, looking for a motion to go in non-public, uh, session?
Make a motion to go into non-public?
I'll second.
Going into non-public for ninety-one A, semicolon, two, IC, uh, consultation with legal counsel. And I believe we will adjourn from that, uh, when we're done with non-public, we're gonna adjourn from that, so everybody should be all set.